...council meeting to order, roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
I'm losing my voice. Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor of police.
Here, I declare a court present, please stand, join, pledge allegiance. Good.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Go to the podium, please.
At Devo, 132 Oakwood, I petitioned the neighborhood back in April for streetlights. I know you guys all approved them, and just kind of looking for when they're going to go up. It's already into November, still dark, I haven't got any word of when they're going to go up. I'd kind of like to know at least a completion date, so I can tell my neighbors and stuff that's been coming and asking me when they're going up.
Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, we had actually, we've been having some issues with ComEd with those lights, I think. Director York has some more details on it, but perhaps what we could do is we probably could send an updated letter on the status with ComEd to the residents that we sent the survey to, but I've got a quick update tonight.
Go ahead, Matt, and could you tell for the record just what streets we're talking about?
Yes, this is Oakwood. Basically, it's the area between Potter and Carter on Oakwood. There's one light just north of Potter. We did have some miscommunications between the city and ComEd on pricing. When we went back to ComEd to discuss it with them, they are in the process of trying to figure out on their side what the actual price is going to be. Some of the information that exchanged hands was not correct on, from the ComEd side back to us when we went for a final completion of the contracts. So, we're working with our ComEd reps to get all that squared away, and then once that is done, we will move forward with the project and have a completion date for you.
All right, thanks, Matt. What's not on the agenda, we really can't discuss it, that's information, but Matt, if you can, council would like some information, so if we can get that on what's going on. I know it was in one of the managers' reports, but, and you're going to reach out to the residents, okay. Is there any other citizens who wish to be heard? Mike, no, 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 no. It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
No, it's public comment.
Well, speaking of, I'm speaking on behalf of the public comment.
All right. Next, any other citizens? Any written communications? I do not have any. Under mayor's report, fairness and equality proclamation, whereas December 3, 2018 marks the 200th anniversary of Illinois becoming the 21st state in the Union, and whereas the City of Wood Dale joins partners across the state in recognizing the Illinois Bicentennial and celebrating what is born, built, and grown in Illinois throughout the year. Whereas the Illinois Department of Human Rights is celebrating the Illinois Bicentennial by engaging at least 200 units of local government throughout the state to join the Fairness and Equality Campaign. Whereas the Fairness and Equality Campaign aims to celebrate and reaffirm land of Lincoln's rich history of valuing diversity, inclusion, and nondiscrimination, and whereas by supporting the Fairness and Equality Campaign, the City of Wood Dale hopes to inspire a welcoming and inclusive community that fosters greater understanding of others, and whereas the City of Wood Dale is proud to support the Fairness and Equality Campaign and urges local units of government throughout the state to reaffirm that the campaign's core principles are essential to an open, thriving, to an open, thriving, and diverse community. Now therefore, I am here on the job to police to hereby proclaim that Wood Dale, Illinois is proud to support Fairness and Equality Campaign in celebration of Illinois Bicentennial and encourage all residents to recognize and honor the core principles of diversity, inclusion, and nondiscrimination. Next, city manager's report.
One item tonight, just for the residents at home, wondering when the IDOT work over the Salt Creek Bridge, or the Irving Park Road Bridge over Salt Creek is going to be completed. Originally, they were hoping to get it completed mid to late November. We did have a rather wet October with a high creek level, so they weren't able to complete some of the pier work they needed to on that bridge. So, there is a slight delay. They're now looking to be finished right around the 7th of December, so we'll have to put up with the construction out there a little bit longer. Hopefully, it doesn't get delayed again, but that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have two items on the consent agenda. If no objections, I entertain a motion. I make the motion to approve. Sorry, it was Peter? Peter and, okay, and Mike. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the items. Item number one, an ordinance approving a special use of planned unit development and major site plan review for the expansion and renovation of the Wood Dale Public Library at 520 North Wood Dale Road, pin 03-09-410-038 in the City of Wood Dale. Item number two, an ordinance amending the City of Wood Dale Stop Sign Ordinance, chapters 15, Article 20, Sections 15.2004 of the City Code regarding stop signs to have a motion.
The motion.
Jean Tony, second. Right, Eugene, you were first, right? Any questions on that? Alder, roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Woods.
I have one report, mayor.
Go ahead.
An ordinance amending regulations concerning delayed egress locks in Chapter 12 of the City of Wood Dale Municipal Code. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was it Roy? Roy, were you second?
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino.
One report, mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm looking for a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wood Dale and the Teamsters Local Union Number 700.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Art. Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Do we, do we have a final language on that contract in it?
Chief.
I mean, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, that should have been included in the packet, and that was approved by the city and the union last week.
Yeah, it was in there. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Send my report.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Sizmarsky.
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderman Messina.
I have one report, mayor.
Go ahead.
A resolution authorizing the execution of the City of Wood Dale Agreement for Purchase and Sale of Real Estate. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this? Alderman Woods.
Let me go to my exhaustive list here. The first one, what is the timing of the physical closing, changing of the property? So, as I read it, that could be up to 15 months if I'm reading that correctly?
Mr. Bond.
Well, it could be. The anticipation is that as soon as they get the required approvals, they're moving forward with the acquisition.
Okay, and, and follow-up, so with all the things that are in work with the TIF and obviously the planned unit development, are those things already underway and being worked on? Are plans submitted? Where are we at? Are we starting from zero after we sign this document?
Mr. Bond.
No, they've got their, they've been working on their engineering. You've seen their, their concept plan. They have commenced on the engineering. Obviously, there is a critical component to this, and that is the TIF aspect of it, because the, there will be some funds dedicated toward this development from the TIF. I believe they will see a lot of more activity once that TIF agreement is before the council and approved. That will set forth the other TIF benefits that they'd be entitled to recoup upon, and the structure of it is if they achieve certain benchmarks, thresholds, construction of a certain number of buildings and so forth, they would then be receiving those funds. So, they want to, they've got that agreement, they want to see that approved, and then they're, they're fully committed, but they are moving forward with their engineering and so forth with this transaction.
So, what's the?
Go ahead, follow-up.
Okay, so the, one of the triggers or one of the reasons for accepting or backing out of the deal is the agreement on the TIF, but the TIF is multi-point, and like you said, it's the carrot, you know, you do step one, step two. So, when I'm reading the language, it doesn't say, it's really not clear enough for me, and maybe it's, I'm not reading it correctly, but...
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, the, the TIF, there are moving parts in the TIF. The council's already approved the TIF itself. The TIF agreement will be the next item to come before you. This, this is, these were segregated, if you recall, there was a redevelopment agreement initially, then the property acquisition component of it. The terms of this changed. The initial concept was that the property would, would be conveyed and transferred, and then essentially there'd be no further obligations. This is tied into the TIF agreement, so that, it's an all, all in one package. So, the redevelopment, the purchase-sale agreement, and the TIF agreement all have interplay with one another to make sure that they move forward. We don't give out any benefits under the TIF until those benchmarks and thresholds have been, have been achieved, but that agreement is ready to go. I'm not sure the manager could perhaps address this to the date, but we have a tentative date for that to come back before the council for their, for their consideration.
Right, I mean, just...
Follow-up, go ahead.
My concern is I look at this and go, this is technically 15 months, could be dragged out before we start if everything, everybody follows through. Obviously, it could happen sooner, but there's, there's really very few things keeping them at the table, and I, and I look at this locking up the property for 15 months with very little skin in the game, and since you, you know, we went to the strict joint order escrow agreement, I mean, there's almost no skin in the game, in my opinion, and the verbiage says that they can back out for, there's a fairly exhaustive list of things and reasons ending with "and any other reason." So, I'm a little apprehensive signing and giving them this and then tying up that property, when I'm sure maybe we could find somebody else possibly if they're really not serious enough, that's...
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, that catch-all was any other matter relating to the property itself as opposed to, you know, market conditions or something. And again, there's a timeline set forth in the TIF agreement that will set, will provide for the stages of development. Their anticipation is being able to put a shovel in the ground as soon as possible and have this entire thing completed. We've got a deadline or timeline in the, in the TIF agreement for that, for that. But yeah, this is, there's contingencies in this agreement, and those contingencies are really predicated upon the approval of the TIF. Once the TIF is done, they anticipate that they'll have, I believe it was $300,000 in engineering costs leading up to this. So, one of the things that they've looked for, which was not acceptable to us, is if it did fall apart, that we'd be responsible for reimbursing them for those costs.
That's right.
In that case, I wholly agree with you that then they have zero skin in the game. At this juncture, they've got a way out, but they'll also have commitments of the, the engineering that's been ongoing and underway, and by the time we get to that point, we'll have been, they anticipate those will be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $300,000.
Go ahead, another follow-up.
Yeah, so when you say engineering, what is that engineering?
Mr. Bond.
For a number of the, initially, the public improvements that they need and the engineering for the site improvements.
And so...
Go ahead.
We, we have those here at the city? The city's looking at those and...
Mr. Bond.
No, they've provided us with the concept. They're, those are in progress, and they're not completing them until they have an agreement to buy the property. So, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg issue.
And the property's being sold for $2.1 million.
Right, and this is the old SBT property, just for the public record, SBT property, the old 7-Eleven property, and a portion of the city-owned adjacent there too for the Metro.
Hold on, hold on. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You answered one of my questions. We're selling it for 2.1. How much should we pay for the property?
Mr. Bond, you recall?
For...
Brett.
Wasn't the bank like...
And what year was that?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson, if you remember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, to the best of my recollection, the purchase price of both those properties was around 1.8 million.
Which property, you said properties?
The 7-Eleven property.
And the SBT.
Okay, I just want to make clear.
Yeah, the SBT was two and a half years ago.
It was 20, actually in 2015.
2015, okay.
It was, what was that? It was like 1.1?
It was a million, million flat.
1 million?
Correct.
Okay.
And the 7-Eleven property, I believe, was somewhere between '04 and '06 when we purchased that, if memory serves me correctly.
So, you said that we paid, we bought it, both properties for 2.8. We're going to sell it for...
No, 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 no.
Go ahead.
1.8.
1.8, okay.
Go ahead, follow-up.
And, yes.
Go ahead.
TIF money, how much are they getting, TIF money?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I believe the way the agreement is structured now, it's 2.25 million, the way it's structured currently. 2.25, or, excuse me, 4.25.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I really have a concern with this property, because I still would like some answers, which I never got. Why wasn't this property ever listed anywhere? Why wasn't, I didn't see no signs on the property, so I don't think it's fair for other developments that they didn't even know about it. Was it published anywhere? I've never seen anything. So, we're going to sell property to a developer, and no one knew about it.
Actually, this is similar to the Thornton's property. Never went up for sale, developer approached the city, the city gave them money back then. That was brand new on the council. I believe I voted against that one. That was 1.2 million dollars for a building that's only worth about a million two. Here, we got a $30 million property, and that was all tax money, and here it's TIF money where the money is zero right now, so it's a little different, but same thing. That property didn't go for sale and was approached by the city same way here.
Well, I wasn't here then, on the council.
And I'm just explaining to you, for your benefit.
Okay, but why, we're changing things in the city, so why can't we change on future properties and, and put it a sign up or something? We're buying properties already, we bought Howland's, we bought this, why, so we don't have no signs. Are we marketing those things to other developers now?
Mr. Murmurs, you want to take that?
We are.
How?
Individual meetings, trade shows, magazines, various avenues.
Could I, could you?
Go ahead.
Could you get me a copy of those magazines where it's listed?
Although, that specific one's not listed, but other sites are listed.
Well, I would like to see a copy of what Bill listed then.
Sure.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley, you were next, go ahead.
So, I'm with Art. I have a little concern about this myself. I mean, there is just too many loopholes in this at all, so my, my question is, until we revisit this and really look into this in detail, I mean, this was, this was given to us every revised agenda that was dropped off at the House, I believe. When was this dropped off? So, there's, I mean, we're giving a development, all this, and the point is, I just don't see enough, my opinion is, I don't think we should approve this until we got some of the documents of their engineer stuff into the building department, because right now we don't have that, and what makes them not say, hey, it's going to cost me too much to go forward, I'm backing out? How much money do we have in, in holding for this land that they put in earnest, in case they backed all the deals?
Mr. Bond.
Well, to the first point, they're not going to do that because they don't own the property, they're not going to, they don't have a contract on the property, so they're not going to finalize all their engineer on a property that the council may say, we're not going forward with the transaction. So, they're not, nor would any developer expend that kind of money for that. This is the same thing that we, the price we've been, we've been discussing, we've been talking about. A lot of the, the conditions that are here aren't necessarily loopholes, those are, those are situations where if things happen, there is an alternate plan, and they, they are not compelled to, to move forward with. There's a $20,000 earnest money that they're posting, and again, they've incurred and will continue to incur at the time they submit their, their building, or their engineering somewhere in the neighborhood of about $300,000, and that's just for this component. The total project is estimated to be somewhere around $34 million is the, is the investment the developers have put into it. The city's, through the TIF fund, contribution would be 4.25, and again, we're getting more for the property than the two properties were purchased for when the city appeared.
So, one follow-up.
Go ahead, follow-up.
So, my question then, why can't we say, okay, we'll do a tentative contract with you to buy this property, but before we sign totally off on it, you have to produce the, they always put contingency on, on houses, am I correct? They, they always put, say, oh, it's continual based on this. Can't we do that?
Mr. Bond.
No, because that would be, if you, for example, if you were going to buy some, a house, you'd say, well, you fix the roof and then I'll sell you the house. You're not going to spend the money to fix the roof until you own that house. They're not going to spend the money to, to do the necessary engineering to complete that unless they, they actually own it. They've been doing things that are the engineering and the studies that they need for the public improvements that are part of the, the project and for those that are, are site-specific, but they're not going to, to go and expend all of those monies without having a contract that they, they own the property. And if it falls through, you know, city's got recourse if there, if something were to happen. The biggest, no, it's not just that. I mean, if they went through and didn't complete it, they're not getting certain other incentive monies and so forth. So, you know, the, again, there's a three-part agreement between the development agreement, the purchase and sale, and the, and the TIF, and this is the sequencing. You've already approved the redevelopment, the next one will be the land acquisition component or sale of it, and then the third aspect of it would be the TIF agreement, which will be coming forward very shortly before you.
Mr. Murmurs, you had something to say?
Just to clarify with Attorney Bond, I thought the reason for the sale, the actual sale of the property tentative, and the tentative timeline in April was to make sure all this engineering and all these ducks were in a row, where we could then perhaps not sell the property if they did not deliver upon the engineering and the plans to our liking.
Mr. Bond.
That's correct.
Alderman Messina, you were next.
Can you take Alderman Sizmarsky? Can I go after him?
Alderman Sizmarsky, go ahead.
First and foremost, not to degrade anybody on this council, but there are six members on this council who are not here. When the purchase of that, one-third of this property was acquired. Mr. Subak was on this board when you purchased 7-Eleven, correct? Nothing has been done since then. Now, we're doing something, and everybody wants to throw a wrench in the, in the gears. I don't understand what's going on there.
The 7-Eleven property, I believe, was purchased even before I got on the council.
It was purchased while Mr. Marshall Subak was on this board, and he had a hard time even selling this board to buy that property. And now they own it, we've owned it for, since he was on the board, and there's other members on this board that were here when they purchased it. Now, we're going to develop it, and they want to cause, they want to stop progress. I don't understand.
I think everybody just wants to make sure we're protected, and I, I think that's what Mr. Bond is trying to explain. Alderman Messina.
I've heard a couple of different points, so my list got a little longer, so I'll try to do this in bullet points. There was talks about us advertising. I've seen on my dais multiple times, different advertisements, that the staff has done a phenomenal job in promoting the city. That alongside our social media person that we hired, I've never gotten more compliments in my four years I've sat on here. So, we are doing the right things, and here's the good part, we really don't have to advertise because people are coming to us. People want to build here. So, there's the old-school mentality, and then there's the new mentality. So, you're just going to, you're going to see this up here all the time, and I tell people this all the time, it's, it's a game of old versus new. It's going to happen. Mentality is, people are coming to town. That's one, so I wanted to mention that. The revised agenda that we got Thursday, nothing changed, correct me if I'm wrong, nothing changed regarding this part of the packet.
No, this was added because Mr. Bond was working on the final details with their attorney.
Okay.
Okay.
As far as bullets as to why, why this is even up for discussion, as far as just thinking that we wouldn't move forward with this, we're making, what, $300,000 on this. There is skin in the game, they're putting up $300,000. To Attorney Bond's point, I would not go ahead and buy a home, I would not say, I'm going to fix that roof before you execute a contract on a home that I want to buy. Not going to do that. These guys are ponying up $300,000 in engineering costs. They need to cover their own behind, is what I'm guessing. And then finally, there's benchmarks. We're not just handing over 4.2 or 4.25 million dollars in TIF money. They need to progress and finish the project in stages, and, and it's time-bound, and if they don't finish in that time, they're not going to get the money. So, to me, I feel like I, we're protected sufficiently enough, and on the flip side, I think they've done their due diligence to protect themselves. And the biggest thing, which to me is mind-boggling, is over 100, I'll conservatively say 100 new units, I think it's 140.
158.
158, 158 new units. Monster building that's being built at a property that is generating us no property taxes today that will be generating property taxes for us in the future. So, please keep that in mind. And finally, we're having a $34 million development put on a property that essentially we bought for 1.8 million, we're selling for a $300,000 profit, you're getting basically 16 times the value of what they're paying for that development. Anybody that has to sit up here and think about this, beyond understanding the protection that the mayor talked about, I mean, this, this is pretty common sense if you've read the packet. That's it.
And just so everybody understands at home, so this is TIF money, right now those properties generate zero tax dollars.
Zero.
Okay, so, the developer gets his money because he's putting up the five, five buildings, correct? Five buildings. That's where the money's going to be generated to pay for the TIF.[1707.33] It's not coming out of some special fund that the city has to have or take a loan on. It's coming from the TIF fund where right now we collect zero, and I believe the number will take seven years to get that money back. Possible, if I remember right, but we can get those right numbers for everyone, so everybody knows. Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I concur with all the things Alderman Messina said. That being said, I don't want this prolonged, because in, in the world of real estate, when I look at 15 months, it's buildable today, month 15, it's not a deal. Just because the economy changes, there's enough outs in this contract to allow that. My concerns are, are we tied in, has staff started looking at floor plans and engineering, are these things relatively in the works? I'm not worried about our, the value received, you know, how much we're spending, what we're giving, that, that's all going to work out. My concern is that this thing gets started sooner than later, and when I look at a timeframe of 15 months, and 15 months in this means till the shovel's in the ground. And if you're building five buildings, now you're looking at two and a half years, right? And we all have lived through a couple of bad years, and so, if, whatever we can do to condense that into the good time and not go into a bad time, that's my only concern. So, I'm only looking out for reducing or condensing what's happening here and want to know if, if they're plugged in with all the other things with the building department and zoning and the TIF and all those things are being worked on.
Alderman Zsuzmarsky.
Brad, I know you've been put on the, on the spot here, first of all, that, that property was purchased prior to 2008, correct?
Go ahead.
The 7-Eleven parcel was correct.
So, I'm going to guarantee you, it was probably purchased for a lot less than $400,000, correct?
No, no.
Yes, it was.
No, no, no.
Total property was about 1.8.
That corner, no, the corner, 7-Eleven.
We, we can verify it, but I remember, I remember.
We'll go on, but we'll pass that. What's the, what's the return on the, what's the rate of return on the, on both properties for after building, everything that happens?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson, I'm not sure, I don't know if he can answer that.
Clarify the question, I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Alderman. What?
The rate of return on the, with, with everything that goes through.
And again, it's between seven and eight years of TIF money, it, you know.
You can answer that.
Yeah, but he's not, can't give you a definite.
Guarantee.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, yeah, can't give you a guarantee until the units are built and then they're properly assessed. And it's been said a couple of times over, currently, those properties are both generating zero tax dollars. So, I mean, just mathematically, anything that goes on there would be an infinite increase, or 100% increase. So, I mean, yeah, if those properties are, you know, 30 to 35 million, that'll be that factor, and then there's a halo effect of the other properties around there, anything else that could be spurred because of that. Relative to our, the TIF investment, I mean, it's a factor of about six or seven relative to that, but the whole area is going to be much greater, given the nature of the taxation currently.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you had your hand up first, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, you mentioned that we're not borrowing any money.
For?
For this project.
Not for this project, no.
For TIF, TIF money.
Well, it'll be, it'll be TIF money, correct.
Are we not floating a bond on this?
The TIF.
Are we floating a bond?
The, what do you call it, TIF bond, right, correct, Mr. Wilson?
Correct, it would be a, a TIF bond, correct.
What's the interest on the TIF bond?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
At this time, that's still unknown because the deal hasn't been made, and so, it has to be right-sized, and there's also, you know, current market conditions, I believe. I mean, it depends on how it's structured and when it's sold, so.
So, basically, all the money's coming from the TIF, from the taxes collected, not from a general fund, tourism fund, motor fuel tax, strictly TIF fund.
Okay.
Go ahead.
One more thing here.
Go ahead.
I heard that this building's going to be $30 million, okay, great. We're going to give them 2.25 million dollars in TIF, fine, but then, we sat up here a couple of months ago, and we got a random residency, is it? That's a $40 million building, and we just nailed them with permits and fines for $800,000. So, I mean, if that's the case, why don't we just sit here and give them the $800,000 in fees back too, if we're going to give this company 2.25 in, in TIF money?
I don't think we nailed them with fines, actually, we gave them a discount, if I remember right, and unfortunately for them, I think it took three years, I don't know the exact time. So, again, if these guys, their permits are going to go for three years, they're going to get the same fees and fines.
Well, if they go three, if they go three years, they're not getting any of this money, correct, Mr. Bond?
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, if they don't satisfy the thresholds in the TIF agreement, they don't, they're not eligible for the TIF benefits that are provided for.
I hope in this agreement, that it, the TIF agreement, that it's not three years.
And that's why, uh.
The project better be done.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, and that's the anticipation, is it's complete, fully complete within that timeframe, that's what's contemplated.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
I mean, one thing I just wanted to say, I mean, we're talking about a company that is worth $3 to $4 billion, not just a couple of million. This is a huge corporation, they have a high-rise downtown, they have golf courses, they have stadiums, they have all kinds of property. They're doing their due diligence, they're spending $30 million to build a, up our community, so I'm not really sure, when you compare it to Random Residence, that was really, there was no multi-billion dollar company, it was some investors that were putting up some millions of dollars.
Donald Trump is too.
Right, no, all right, let's roll call, we have a motion and a second.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yep.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Zsuzmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley. Alderman R. Wesley.
No.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
And that amazing pass motion concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob.
No report, Mayor.
Stormwater, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, approval of list of bills, November 1st, Alderman Messina.
Yep, a, one report, Mayor.
Go ahead.
List of bills dated November 1st, 2018, in the amount of $641,770.76.
There's your motion.
That is my motion.
Who has a second?
Second.
Alderman Woods, second. Alderman Zsuzmarsky, question, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know where it falls, I tried to ask it earlier, rumors that come here asking for an extension on their stay.
This is list of bills.
No, I understand.
List of bills, you got a question on the bills? We could talk about that stuff later. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
So, I have a question, and, and I got my answer, but I, I want to make sure I'm right here. So, on page three, okay, the Daily Herald, public notice of $826.80. Now, my question is, I got my answer, but I don't think it's the right answer that should have went here, so I want, you guys are aware of this. I cannot believe we did $826 of public notices in this town.
Mr. Wilson.
I just can't believe that.
Go ahead, so everybody can hear what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, it was written up in the P card reporters' public notices. We inquired a little bit deeper, there was some, I guess, confusion that it perhaps was for the subscription for the paper, then it perhaps was both. So, we've emailed the Daily Herald, they forwarded it on to their supervisor to get us clarification on what exactly that is. We have done a lot of notices, with Alderman Wesley's point, normally, they come in individualized, or they're for CDC or things of that nature. So, it is with the, what is it, their accounts receivable supervisor right now, to get us some clarity on the breakdown of all that, as there is some, something, it needs to be clarified, because to, to his point, if it is for subscription services, then we need to seriously look at that and, and investigate that, so. But we are, we are investigating it, just waiting for an email back from the supervisor.
Okay.
I, I have a follow-up in that.
Yes.
So, it, the email that I got back from, they said it was for the yearly prescription of the newspaper. I will tell you, sitting at this dais, if we are paying $826 a year for that newspaper, okay? If I'm concerned, if you need a newspaper that bad, go to 7-Eleven or Whitehead and buy it, because you can get cheap. I calculated it out, it's $200, $2.50 per delivery to this, and do we get the paper seven days a week here?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Two points, we do, and to your further point, I completely agree with you, and so, depending how that comes back, a decision will be made on the existence of that relationship.
So, my, my question, Mayor, I, I would ask that this be taken out of the, the bills.
Well, it was on the P card, so, but, Mr. Wilson will get back to us.
So, why you got?
Hold on, it's, it's not a check, correct, Mr. Wilson?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's exactly why.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So, if it's on the P card, we can't object to it?
Of course, we can object.
Yes.
Okay, so, why can't we hold that down?
He, he has already.
Yeah.
Oh, he didn't pull it?
No, he didn't pull it.
Didn't you say, didn't you say a second ago, you were, you inquired, hold on?
The finance chairman.
Hold on, finance chairman. Mr. Wilson.
No, sure, we, we certainly, it's, it's a credit card, certainly, we can protest the charge, should the need arise. We're investigating what exactly it is, and then, if it's unsatisfactory, then yes, we'll reach out to the vendor and either get a refund or do a protest with the vendor to get a refund.
Because you said this has, has notices in it and probably has a subscription as well, combined.
Yes, we just need some clarity.
You need the exact, correct, go ahead, follow up.
So, I take it that we, that you will send out a memo on the list of bills somewhere when our credit does come through, or what is the verdict on it?
Mr. Wilson?
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up?
I got another question on bills.
Can I follow up on that?
On this?
On this topic.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Yeah, so, it's finance chairman, that's something we looked at, and that actually protects us with the P card, just like your credit card, if you see something, everything is itemized. So, at any point, I could go to Brad and say, pull that bill, I want to see every line item, and we can contest it. It actually kind of protects us, just for, for future, future reference, and we did not cut a check yet, just like your credit card. It's not in the list of checks that I signed or Sandy signed this week, so, but we can't contest it for a credit, and that's what he's going to come back to next week.
Correct. Brad.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, as soon as we have a resolution, we'll, we'll, we'll get it sent out.
You, follow up, Alderman Wesley, you had another question, you said?
On bills.
Shoot.
I got two questions on bills.
Okay.
Bristol North Middle LLC, TIF benefit, $100,000, what company is it?
Mr. Wilson.
That is more commonly known in Wooddale as Hagili Logistics.
Which one?
Hagel, or Hagili Logistics, they took the former USUN building, right there at 390. Yeah, they were in the old OSCO warehouse, 855, and they moved over to the old, was it USUN building at Middle and the Expressway 390?
So.
Go ahead.
So, we're, this new, this TIF thing is new to us, of course, we've only been in a couple of years, so that, that is coming out of the TIF fund?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Correct, about a year ago, give or take, there was an agreement signed with them.
We have that much in that, in that fund?
We do, so that, yes, it is coming out of the TIF money, not general fund money, it's coming out of the revenues from that TIF district, and there are sufficient funds to, to cover that at this time.
Okay.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Let's talk about the company that's doing the clock tower, $299,790.90. Is this a final payment, is this a partial payment, is this?
Mr. Wilson.
Done, where are we on this?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Sure, I can answer part of that, and then I'll, Mr. York can answer the other part.
Okay, go ahead.
It is unfortunate, there's a page break in there, so there's the, the amount that the invoice was, and then at the top of the very next page is the liquidated damages amount that we're withholding for them from not reaching substantial completion in accordance with the contract, and that's $52,000 that we're withholding from them, so, that is, actually, the attorney's reviewed that letter, so, we have been withholding the monies for the project not being complete in the timely manner, but I'd have to defer to Mr. York if the mayor's okay with it for.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yes, there is approximately $160,000 in retainage that's being held, plus there are some other items that have not been charged out yet, so, we do have quite a bit of money held back for that project for completion.
Go ahead, follow up.
Yeah, $160, $60,000, is that counting the $52,000 or not counting the $52,000?
That's not.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
That's not counting the $52,000, $52,000 is liquidated damages, it's outside the retainage.
Okay, so, how long, how long are we going to hold this retain, retainage?
Mr. York, is that you or Mr. Bond?
Retainage will be held until the project is fully completed, we will not release any of the funds until the project is completed, and will not be completed until spring of next year, when all the final plannings are completed.
You have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
Probably like, probably not until June, June, July, I would guess, next year.
So, in return, in return, we will hold this $160,000 until that is.
Retainage.
Yes. Did you have a, you had a, said you had a second one?
Those were, those were two, the $100,000 and $299, that's two.
Somebody else had their hand up over here, was it Peter or Eugene?
No, I'm good.
Oh, okay. Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base referencing the Hagel Logistics Building. My memory isn't as good as it always is, so if the city manager could refresh my memory on bringing that business to town and kind of stealing it away from our neighbor, Ocho Village.
Sure, the exciting, the exciting thing about that TIF project was actually, not so much the TIF project, but the building which Hagel vacated, we stole a rather exciting business from a neighboring community.
We didn't steal.
Well, we didn't steal.
We persuaded them.
They came.
Wooddale is better.
Came willingly, and it's, it's a nice business addition. That is no TIF dollars there.
Thank you.
Alderman Zsuzmarsky.
Mr. York, pertaining to the clock tower, that certain couple of members on this board wanted water features added, which is well documented on who they were, are they working it, or will they be working, or is that part of the $162,000 that is withholding?
Mr. York.
That they wanted in this project that we didn't want?
The water features are currently not operational due to the fact that it's been cold at night. When we had the opening of the clock tower a couple of weeks ago, if it would not have been 29 degrees the night before, the, the fountains would have been operational. We chose not to fill those, there's a 30-day run window that needs to take place in order to make sure that there's no problems with it. So, we, our thought was to hold off until the spring to do the final fill, do the 30-day run window, make sure everything is working properly, so. Whereas, we are confident that it is working, we will wait until the spring to, for the finalization of that portion of the project.
Mr. Murmas has to, wants to add something, go ahead.
Do we have an exact date, Alderman Zsuzmarsky wants to know when he can go swimming.
Did you want to make a follow-up, Alderman Zsuzmarsky?
No, I just want to make sure that there's no warranty, no guarantee, no warranty.
Issues?
Issues that are going to surprise after you haven't tested it yet, so when we do test it, it's still under guarantee.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yes, they have not fulfilled the total portion of the contract regarding the fountains until the 30-day run window.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Why did I ask a question in regards to Mr. Mur, city manager Murmas had mentioned, there's still some electrical work that's going to be done there? Could you give us a little update on what's going to be done there still?
Sure, yeah, there is some electrical work yet to be done on the, it's called an ambient lighting system, you may notice it outside City Hall. It adjusts the light depending on the light in the day or at night, so that system hasn't been fully installed yet by the contractor.
Good, follow up, Alderman Jacob.
So, I, I, I know I've heard a couple of people complain it's too bright, that ambient light is going to take care of it once that's.
Correct.
That's one of the features that's still not complete on some of the other stuff.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman, Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Zsuzmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, we need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
For plant acquisition, pending litigation, and review of the official minutes. We had a mo, who was the motion?
Me.
Who seconded?
Mike.
Mike.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right.